Welcome to the regular council meeting in Bossier City. Today is Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. It is 3:00 PM. We'll have a call to order invocation by Councilmember Jeff Darby and the Pledge of Allegiance by myself. Please silence your cell phones.
Father spray, holy Father, we thank you for this time. We thank you for this occasion. We thank you for those who are here. We thank you, Father God, for the things that you've done, the things that you're going to do. We lift up Lord God, the Slack family, Lord. We ask that you will comfort them. We thank you for his service in this city, in this parish. We pray for others who are hurting. Father, we ask that you would continue to bless us with direction from above. We ask you, Lord God, to be glorified by what we do and that we honor you in all that we do. We pray for those who are sick among us. We ask you to give them healing. We pray for your divine direction in this meeting in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
In accordance with Louisiana open meeting laws and adopted Bossier City Council meeting rules and resolution, the city council acts for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on a particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal impertinence or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the president protesting, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked, a councilperson or a mayor, except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms and they have been instructed to maintain decorum. Ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right. Ceremonial matters.
Black History Month recognition for Mr. Glenn D. Stroud and Ms. Yvonne Bartlett.
Thank you, Mr. Darby, for joining me. I want to thank all the councilmen for the support of me reading these proclamations. I want to thank you. Ms. Bartlett, could you come up to the part, please?
I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas Black History Month affords a special opportunity to learn more about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to progress of our nation. And whereas the city of Bossier recognizes and celebrates Black History Month by honoring a few standout leaders in our community. And whereas Yvonne M. Bartlett currently serves as the executive director for the Multicultural Development Center Housing Counseling Agency in Bossier City, Louisiana. She has worked over 20 years with the local financial institution and has over 20 years of experience as a HUD-approved housing counselor as well, especially with HUD is in credit, budget, and default counseling. And whereas Ms. Bartlett has a bachelor's degree in business management from ULM. She is dedicated mother of the Elizabeth Baptist Church in Benton, Louisiana. And whereas Yvonne M. Bartlett is an excellent example of leadership, her passion to see others succeed has made a difference in the lives of many who society might have written off. Her hard work and consistent service has made a difference in our world. The city of Bossier City is honored to recognize Ms. Bartlett. Thank you for making our community a better place. Now, therefore, I, Thomas H. Chandler, mayor of the great city of Bossier City, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 27th, 2024 as Black American Leadership Recognition Day.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You don't want to take a picture with your family right now? Up here?
Y'all miss all my family.
Okay. Tommy, bring him down towards you.
Yeah, y'all, come on down this way. They want to cover up both of them.
Yeah. Don't break the camera.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to call up Mr. Glenn Stroud, an old friend of mine.
Come on in.
All right, now, I'd like to read a proclamation to you, Mr. Stroud. Whereas Glenn D. Stroud has been a resident of Bossier City for 40 years. He was married to Emma J. Stroud, a former Bossier Parish schoolteacher, and they had three beautiful daughters together.
You can see that. I bet he looked like a monk.
He graduated from Mitchell High School and attended Spalding Business College. He is retired from Western Electric. And whereas Mr. Stroud is an active member of Belcher Chapel Baptist Church, where he serves as chairman of the Board of Deacons. And whereas Glenn Stroud is a trailblazer, a proactive community leader, here are just a few of his many accomplishments and contributions. He was the first black man to serve on the Board of Supervisors of Elections at the age of 27. He was admitted, appointed by Governor Edward Edwards as president. Mr. Stroud was the first black man to run for city council in Bossier City. Although he was not elected, he set the example for the next generation. He was also the founder of the Martin Luther King Junior Parade in our community. And whereas Glenn Stroud teaches us to stand up for what you believe and even when you might be standing alone. His courage and confidence set the standard for all leaders. He is a black American leader whose hard work, focus, goals, and solid reputation has earned him respect in our city, our region, and our state. And now, therefore, I, Thomas H. Chandler, mayor of the great city of Bossier City, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, February 27th, 2024 as Black American Leadership Recognition Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Darby.
Claire Woods, Greenfield Environmental Trust Group, Inc., update on Tronix Kerr McGee Wood Treating Facility.
Good afternoon. Good to see all of you again. I'm pleased to be here to share an update about the former Tronix Kerr McGee Wood Treating Facility over on Hamilton Road. Could we switch? There we go. Okay, I'm going to start. I know everyone has heard updates about this site before, but I'll start with a quick site overview. This is a former wood treating facility. It was used to treat wood to create materials for things like telephone poles and railroads. It operated from 1930 to 1987, and it was closed, it was purchased in 1980 by Kerr McGee and decommissioned in 1988. As a result of years and years of operations, there is contamination on the property and also in the residential neighborhood around the property. On-site, there's creosote and benzene and polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons. And off-site, we found evidence of polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, or PAHs. Because there is residential impacts here, we've prioritized the cleanup in the residential neighborhood. And you all have heard quite a bit over the last few years from me about the remediation work that we've been doing at Scott Dickerson Homes, which is highlighted in pink on the map. This site is being cleaned up under the Louisiana Recap Program, which is the regulatory program that controls environmental cleanups in Louisiana. So just a bit of site history, there's two properties here. The west property on the west side of Hamilton Road and the main property, which is a little bit bigger, on the east side of Hamilton Road. The main property is where most of the treatment operations happened historically. And it's truly unfortunate, but the operators of this plant used wastewater ditches to carry their processed wastewater from the process area on the main plant through ditches at a time into a vacant area that later the Housing Authority property, Scott Dickerson Homes, was built on the area where the facility's wastewater ditches used to run. So, over the last few years, we've been doing quite a bit of remediation. I know some of you have come out to see the work we've been doing to address the contamination. The first phase of the project had to do with excavating yards and grassy areas and concrete areas around the property and doing additional testing in the neighborhood. The second phase of the project was a parking lot replacement. We found contamination underneath the parking lot at Scott Dickerson Homes, so we ended up replacing the entire parking lot. I visited this body last summer in July to share information about our plans to do this work. This work is now finished, and I won't go through all of the details just because of the time restrictions, but you can see the parking lot is in a really beautiful condition now. It's been a big change for the residents there at Scott Dickerson Homes. During the parking lot replacement, though, we found a very high concentration of contaminated material, a level of concentration that we hadn't seen in any of the hundreds of samples we've taken before across our entire work at the site. So what did that mean? We had to look, because of this finding, we had to look at whether there's a possibility of an indoor air problem. Normally, a building's foundation will create a barrier if there is contamination under the ground to prevent the contamination from seeping up from the ground into the indoor air. However, if there's really high levels of contamination, the contamination can travel upwards in vapors in the soil, enter through cracks in a foundation, and then mix with the indoor air that people breathe. So as soon as we found this, I'll just call it a hotspot, we knew these levels are high enough to do an evaluation of whether there's an indoor air problem, especially in the buildings that could be built over where those former wastewater ditches ran. So we identified a number of buildings at the Scott Dickerson Homes property for this evaluation. You can see the buildings that we're looking at, they're circled in red. Some of these buildings are two-unit apartment homes and some of them are four-unit apartment homes. So, we actually completed the first phase of this work from February 10th to 17th. The goal was to collect air samples from inside the homes, below the homes, in the sub-slab, and then outside each building, as well as from the sewer lines that led to the buildings. In December, we had a community meeting where we explained this plan and the need to do the indoor testing. And then we also went door-to-door in December for three days to try to share information with residents, let them know that this testing would be happening. So, just this month, we did, we did the first phase of testing that required three visits. It's pretty, it's pretty invasive on the residents because you have to go into their home, look at what chemicals they might have that could affect the testing, advise them not to do things like smoking because there's naphthalene in cigarette smoke that will affect the testing that we're doing, place the testing equipment in the homes on first-floor apartments that require drilling into the sub-slab. And then on the third day, we would collect the testing equipment and also return any of the household chemicals that we took from the home during the survey process. So we finished that, as I said, this month. If more information is needed, we'll be going back in March to do some real-time testing, but we expect to be able to share the results in April. We did do a limited amount of real-time testing when we were there earlier this month, and we're not seeing anything alarming that's requiring an immediate action. But we will have more comprehensive results in April. We're also going to be holding another meeting in early April, which you all will receive an invite to. And then, the long-term solution is either a vapor mitigation system, it's called, or, you know, coordinating with the Housing Authority with what they want to do with these buildings long-term. So that's an update on the indoor air testing. Just quickly, we're also working towards redevelopment planning. We are recruiting residents for a redevelopment working group. We have a redevelopment survey that we've asked residents to complete. I did want to share with this body that we are very interested in pursuing a land donation to the city or parish for a public use here. And we met with some city and parish stakeholders yesterday to talk about that possibility. We often pursue or recommend to our beneficiaries a land donation where there's a public use or a public benefit that could come out of the donation, like a recreation center or a center for vocational education, which is something we would certainly support here. Though, there is a working group made up of residents, and some of their priorities are listed here on the screen for the future use of the site. And the important thing here is that sites like this can be safely reused for the community and can really create, turn something that was once a problem into a real asset. So this is just a small schematic showing the areas that are soon going to be ready for reuse. The six acres on the west side of Hamilton Road will soon be ready, and as will six acres on the east side of Hamilton Road. The remainder of the east or main property, which is around 20 acres, is not yet available. We still have work to do on the environmental front there. This is an example of a place where we've done a beneficial, beneficial reuse projects before at another contaminated site. This is a former Sarco lead smelter. You can see the scale of this massive environmental problem in these photos. We received over 2,000 acres of property through a bankruptcy in 2009. And since then, we've been able to either donate or sell 1,600 acres of those 2,000 acres. And we've been able to help support uses like public schools. There's a high school and an elementary school that was built on the property here. There's also a greenway trail that consists of hundreds of acres that people can use for public enjoyment. And these are some of the pictures from this project. Since we acquired this land in 2009 and these projects are already up and running, there's a residential subdivision, a high school, a commercial center, and an elementary school. And that's the greenway trail that we donated land for. So next steps include continuing outreach to residents, doing some market research on what the needs are, and then hopefully coordinating with city and parish stakeholders on whether there's a possibility of pursuing a land donation that would allow for a beneficial public use for this community. That's all I have for you. Do you have any questions?
I've got one. The worst-case scenario, the buildings that you're getting high readings on, if those have to be torn down, is that in the, is that in the state money to rebuild those?
So, we're not funded by state funding. We're funded...
Well, through the, through the state.
That's a really complicated question that I don't have the answer to. I think, you know, those are, that's a HUD property, Housing Authority of Bossier City property. So I think if it came to that, which we're definitely not there yet, if it came to that, it would require a lot of discussion and coordination amongst LDEQ and the Housing Authority of Bossier City.
I'm sure the DEQ's got plenty of money to, to pay for that.
They oversee all of the work that we do, so they're very familiar with this site. They approve all of our work plans. So, they would be very, all I can say is that they would be very involved in any decision like that. I'm not familiar with their budgets.
Thank you.
Ms. Woods, how many units were tested when you did that in February?
So we tested, we aimed to test 16 units. We ended up being able to test 14 units. One of the things that I didn't mention is that there's going to be a second phase of testing in April. So, I, one of the units, I, just based on the circumstances, I'm not sure that we'll be able to test. The other unit, the resident let us know that we could do the testing in April. It just wasn't a good time for her in February. And we were able to test all of the other units. If we end up seeing problems or things that are concerning, we will expand the area and test additional units as part of our program.
Okay.
And then, those are the apartment units. We also tested one private residence that's not on, residence, that's not on this, my figure. And then we also tested the lighthouse school.
Okay. And if you were to donate the property for public use, how many acres are you talking about donating?
So there's six acres that are available on the west side of Hamilton Road and approximately six acres on the east side of Hamilton Road. For the property that's on the east side, it's all part of one parcel right now, so it would require a subdivision. And I should note that any land donation has to approve for a trust, so any land donation has to be approved by our beneficiary, which is LDEQ. But we would recommend to them, if there's a beneficial public use, we would recommend that they accept, that they pursue a donation.
Six acres?
Yeah, six acres on the west side, six acres on the east side. So there's a total of approximately 12 acres available.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time. I think all of you have my contact information. If you have any questions or if you'd like a copy of this presentation, please let me know, and I'll be seeing you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'm going to let Preston Friedley give you a quick update on the Bossier City Charter Commission. That's no objection.
Preston Friedley at 5004 Oak Alley in Bossier City. First of all, I just wanted to give you all a quick update so I can keep in communications with the members of the city council. The Charter Commission has undertaken its work since we were formed at the end of December. We spent the month of January in an organizational meeting. I was elected as chairman of the commission, and so we've got our organizational meetings behind us. We started a series of town hall meetings in which we've had one at Hooters Park. We've had another one at the Shady Grove Rec Center. I would tell you that each of the meetings, we've had anywhere from 15 to 30 citizens who've shown up to give us input and thoughts on things that they would like to see included in the potential changes to the city charter. We have another meeting tonight at 6:30 at the Bossier Instructional Center. The meetings usually last approximately one and a half hours. We have so far been very good in not going past about 7:30 or 7:45. I'd like to invite all of you as members of the city council. Some of you have come to these meetings and just listened. I want to thank the mayor for giving us the push to get the Charter Review Commission going. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that we appreciate Richard Ray, who's come to our meetings, Amanda Nottingham, Jim Whitman has been a great source, and Phyllis McGraw. We would not be able to do the work that we're doing without the support of your staff. I would tell you also, several staff members have come to our meetings to sort of just watch and see what's going on. And if there's any technical questions that come up, it's always nice to have the professional people there to assist us in that. Again, I just want to thank you for letting us work. We hope we will have our next meeting on March the 4th at 6 o'clock here at the city council chambers. We have a scheduled, I think, three meetings through the month of March, and we hope at that point to start working on some recommendations for you. And at that point, I'll ask if there's any questions from the city council members just to tell you thank you for your support of the Charter Review Commission.
Questions, counsel? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. All right, counsel, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, counsel, additionally, I need a, a motion to approve the minutes of February 13th, 2024, regular council meeting. Dispense with the reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Darby and Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, bids.
Witness opening of sealed bids for P2401 Walbrook Park Building.
Good afternoon, counsel, Mayor Chandler. We have seven packages to open today for bid number 2401, the Walbrook Park Building. There were two addenda on this project, and the engineer's estimate is $405,000. The budget was approved, the funding for the budget was approved on the 2023 sales tax capital budget and ordinance two of 2023. The budget was approved, the funding for the budget was approved on the twenty twenty-three sales tax capital budget and ordinance two of twenty twenty-four. The first bid is from Benchmark Construction Group of Louisiana. Their bid, they did acknowledge both addenda, their bid bond is included, and their total is five hundred and eight thousand, three hundred dollars. The next bid is from Blocker Builders LLC. They did acknowledge both addenda and their bid bond is included. Their bid is for four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The next bid is from Henderson Construction Services Incorporated. They did acknowledge both addenda, their bid bond is included, and their bid is for five hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars.
What, what was that again?
Five twenty-six, five thirty-one. Our next bidder is Integrity Incorporated. They did acknowledge both addenda and their bid bond is included. Their bid comes in at five hundred forty-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. The Guinness Brothers Construction, Inc. Both addenda are acknowledged and the bid bond is included. The total for this bid is five hundred and nine thousand dollars even. Precision Builders Incorporated. Both addenda are acknowledged, the bid bond is included, and their bid is six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And the last bid for this project comes from Rhodes Properties and Development LLC. Both addenda have been acknowledged, the bid bond is included, and their bid is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I ask that you take these bids under advisement.
So move.
Second.
One second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, as, as y'all can see, which I knew this was going to come in over budget, I would ask that the council, that we, we take this into consideration, we look at this project and put it on hold at this time. I think this is just a very bad time for us to be spending, I mean, the cheapest bids, four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, spending this money when we have employees quitting every day, every week here at the city. Our police, our fire, every city employee is underpaid. I'm sure all of y'all got it. They can go start working at Panda Express and make more than our starting out salary as a policeman or a fireman in Bossier City. Nothing against Walbrook Park, nothing against baseball. This is just money right now that the city does not need to spend. We have other stuff that we need to worry about right now. We've got a salary study going on that we need to worry about and figure out when that salary study comes back. Because it's going to come back and say that all of our city employees are underpaid. We need to think about that and take that into consideration and put this project on hold.
Ben, is there something we can talk to these guys that made the bid or the lowest bid and see what they can do with it? And when you, if y'all figure something out, you come back and we'll get it off the table again.
So it's more important to go back and get somebody to lower their bid than worrying about all of the other stuff, the projects and stuff that we still have ongoing, the money that we still have to spend. I see no reason that they need this building right now. We're, we're building a building for Bossier Dixie Baseball to go over and use for free. I, I, I don't understand it. We make zero revenue off of this, but we are building something for somebody to go use for free. And our taxpaying citizens cannot even use these fields. But we're going to spend four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars on this. I, I, I don't, I don't understand the logic on this.
Did you make a motion to take it under advisement?
Yeah.
I second it.
So the original, you withdraw the original motion?
Yeah, he, well, he took, I was just asking you to under advisement.
So we have a, first by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Williams, do you take it under advisement? Comments from the audience? Any additional questions?
Mr. President, just in way of clarification, are you saying, Mr. Williams, that you are taking under advisement the opening of the quote? Or advisement of Mr. Hammond's recommendation to put it on hold?
Well, I think, I think he said under advisement, and I think more or less he was trying to table it. And that's why I wanted to clarify with him. Basically, take it under advisement, go back, look at the bids, look at the contract, and again, see what, something we can do to get it down to where, where we had the money for.
I don't, I don't think that's what-
No, that's not what I want to do. I, I want this, I want this whole project put on hold for right now.
Okay, well, that's, that's why I asked that question.
Yeah, yeah. My motion is that this whole project is put on hold for right now.
Okay, so you need to withdraw. I'll withdraw my second, you need to withdraw your motion.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion and make a new one.
Then you want to make another one?
Yeah. I make a motion that this project is put on hold at least for a hundred and twenty days until we figure some, some other stuff out here, until, or at least until this salary study comes back.
My second.
Okay. And by way of clarification, Mr. President, again, this item is to open the bid for the project. So I don't, I don't think we can take that action. Maybe the clerk can, can clarify if we can take that action to put it on hold. I order attorney.
Of course not.
Is this just to open the bids today?
This motion needs to be, if you want to-
Mr. Ray, Ms. McGraw said that's probably something better for you to answer.
Well, the agenda item is just to open the bids, and so I think that to put the item on hold, I mean, you've had the, you've opened the sealed bids. I'm not sure that that's appropriate to do a totally separate.
Okay, well, I can make, I can make a motion to reject the bids, correct?
Well, today is just the reading of the bids in the public. That's the item. So then-
I'm just, might I offer a suggestion? In light of the bid being over the budget, obviously, we can't go into construction without additional funds. So I'm, I serve at the pleasure of the council, so if, if there's, if the council says we want to put this project on hold or, or we're not going to proceed forward, that's one course of action. I don't know that that can be done today or not. But I, I will go back. I would personally, it's, it'll benefit me to go back. We obviously had seven bidders on it. I'm, I'm just interested in understanding the bid in more detail and at least being able to provide a report to the council on where we're at with that. But to move it forward, Councilman Hammond, would require more money, which would require a council vote, so-
I'll, I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my motion at this time until we-
As it stands, as it stands right now, it's, it's dead.
Yeah. All right, I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
Yeah. So the point I was alluding to was the fact that the contract is not activated at all. This is just to open the, the, the reading in public.
And we have, we have four hundred and five thousand, and we wouldn't bid it out. So that's why I was trying to get to the point, either we're going to table it or we're not going to table it. So like I said, we just, we're just going to vote on reading of the bids.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm? Well, that's why I tried to take it under advisement like we usually do.
So I think there needs to be a new motion and second since we've had a team withdrawn.
I'll make a motion, we take it under advisement.
I'll second it.
All right, so Councilman Williams first, Councilman Smith second, that we're taking these bids under advisement. Is there any comments from the audience? Additional questions from the council? Everybody clear with their voting on? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right.
Adopting ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bossier and Louisiana Department of Veterans Affairs. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to amend the two thousand and twenty-three State and Federal Grants Fund and Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund budgets in accordance with the Local Government Budget Act. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, new business.
Adopting ordinance, amending ordinance number one thirty-three of two thousand and eighteen by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land from B two to B three, being one five seven acres, more or less located at three zero zero two Shed Road, Bossier City, Louisiana, for purpose private animals rescue shelter. Final reading. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Let me ask a question of Amanda or somebody. What's the difference in number one and number three? They're both at three thousand two. Oh, there's Carlotta. I'm sorry, I didn't see you right there.
Number one is referring to the zoning only. Cat or animal shelters in general are not a use by right, but they're only allowed in B three agriculture or industrial uses. So they had to change the zoning first and then come back with the use so that we could approve it, so.
I got you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Carlotta.
Yes.
Where this property is, is, I take it that's a house that backs up right beside it, and are those houses across the street from it?
There's houses on the east side of the project.
Yes.
It's the old Lot Dennis Street. It's across the street from the houses. There's no houses.
Nothing on the south side for the most part, but there is a house immediately to the east of the project.
Well, I mean, we're just, we're going through a situation right now with another animal shelter, rescue, whatever it is. I mean, and here we are going right back in a residential area with another one. I don't know how noisy cats are. I'm sure they, I'm sure they can be noisy.
And obnoxious.
I, I mean.
So there will be no outdoor play areas at all. They will only be indoors, and they are required to put a compatibility buffer on the east side, so that would include a six-foot wood or masonry wall to include some trees to be ten-foot to twelve-foot at planting. So we did take some measures in place, but there won't be any outdoor play areas for cats. They will be housed indoors.
I mean, do they have a regulation on how many cats they can store?
I don't have a regulation. Maybe the state does, but I'm uncertain of how many they can house. I believe they told us that they would have up to thirty. And there won't be any operating hours on Saturday or Sunday. Drop-off times will be between eleven and two P M. Fifteen-pound cats would be the max, and the shelter is run by volunteers.
Is, is this the same one that used to be up on Benton Road?
Yes, it's the one that's on Benton Road now.
Okay.
Yeah, that was all I was going to say, is that they, there is just a relocation, so they have been in operation.
So they were in the strip center that, that caught on fire? No, no, they were, no, they were further down at the corner of, corner of North or Montgomery and-
Yes, that's it.
And Benton Road. Okay.
Are they, are they restricted to just dogs and cats or any rescue animal?
This is cats only.
Cats only?
Cats only, no, no dogs at all.
Okay.
We did take that into consideration because of the, you know, the neighboring adjacent properties, but the board felt comfortable with them being indoors only and no play areas being included, that this would be okay.
Do, do cats play outdoors?
That's my question. I try to get my daughters and her cats out there to play, but she won't do that.
Yes, they don't leash well, from what I know, so.
Yeah, I was just curious. I didn't know if they did it then.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any additional questions for Carlotta? Thank you, Carlotta.
Yes, sir.
All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance approving a conditional use approval for the sale of high- and low-content alcohol for off-premises consumption at a retail store, Family Dollar, located at two three three four Barxel Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Anybody here representing the dollar store?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, Rob Hosack, I'm sorry. Rob Hosack with Decisions Consulting here on behalf of Family Dollar, sir.
The only question I have, when I retire, I ran grocery store for a long time. You know, I know what theft is in them, because I was a store detective stationed in California at the BX Room Base. And I know how people like to pick up things and put them in their pockets. So when I go in there, I want to see one person, and your store is bigger than the regular dollar store, you know, where the cash resters are and coolers are. Of course, that's your business and it, you know, you know how theft is. Are you going to put two people in there to watch it or?
Yes, sir. I believe ultimately their plan is that there would be two people in there, councilperson. I do think that as part, if this conditional use permit were approved, one of the things that we had briefed the municipal planning commission on, there will be additional video security measures that will be put into place in addition to some of the safety plan components that the store has. I will tell you, we have had some shrinkage problems on a national level, but those have really been more limited to those types of items that could later be resold at, for lack of a better term, perhaps a flea market or something, sir. Have not had shrinkage related to alcohol noted by any of our store managers yet, sir. And I appreciate your question. Thank you very much.
And you're just selling coolers?
Yes, sir. We have a very limited floor space, and we have committed that it would not exceed one percent of our designated floor area within that particular store, sir. So basically, you'd be looking at a small cooler area, and then for the wine sales, it's actually in what we refer to as an end cap. So it would be at the end of an aisle, probably about that tall.
Those wine coolers are actually?
They're actually just-
Just wine?
We call them caps, yes, sir, with, with wine.
End caps?
Yes, sir.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions?
Yeah, I do. Chief Zagone, I know this location, a while back you had problems there with, I guess, fire-related problems with aisles being blocked and-
I think that was the Dollar General.
Was that the Dollar General?
I'd be glad to send somebody over and do an inspection and make sure the aisle widths are thirty-six inches and sixty inches on the main aisle if you want. But I would highly recommend that with the sale of alcohol. Seems to be a problem we have when they're stocking, they, they block aisles, move all the carts in, and they won't maintain the thirty-six-inch travel width per the N A P A one oh one lifesafety code.
All right, thank you.
I've got one question, Carlotta. When we approved this for the other family dollars, last year, we had limited, we had prohibited them from doing single can sales. Is that the case for this location as well?
We, it wasn't a condition on this location, but I don't think there's intent to sell singles. I think it's all going to be boxed.
No, no objection, councilperson.
All right.
To that in particular, stand in motion.
All right, thank you.
All right, additional questions? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Adopting ordinance approving
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Adopting ordinance approving a conditional use approval for a proposed private animal rescue shelter Port C D Cat Rescue located at three zero zero two Shed Road, Bossier City, Louisiana.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance amending ordinance number one thirty-three of two thousand and eighteen by changing the zoning classification of a certain tract of land I one to R M H S being five point nine nine acres more or less located at section twenty-four Township, eighteen north, range thirteen west, Bossier City, Louisiana, for proposed additional phase to the existing winter place subdivision. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to declare certain movable equipment owned by the City of Bossier as a surplus to the city's need and provide for disposal according to the law. First reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to appropriate fifteen thousand from the Hotel Hotel Tax Fund to provide funding to the Shreveport Bossier Convention and Tour Spirit to support local Mardi Gras parade. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing orders authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute an agreement between the City of Bossier and the Department of Transportation and Development. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, is, is this just to move forward, um, into next year while construction of I twenty is going on? Is that, is that what this is for?
Good afternoon, councilman. Mayor, no, we have a yearly contract with Department of Transportation. Uh, they pay us a fee every year to maintain and mow the interstate from the river to the racetrack.
Oh, okay. So that's what that, we were, we were kind of under the assumption that this was for inclement weather. That's what the, that's what the ordinance says.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, yeah, that would, that would be that what that's for.
That's just, just until the construction of I twenty is complete, correct?
No, this was for winter road preparedness.
Right, and I, I would think the term would be, um, I don't know, just for a year or a half.
It, it does say in the proposed ordinance, Councilman Hammond, that it's effective from the date of execution and will remain in effect until the Interstate twenty reconstruction project.
This, this allows us to go up, to go and help the state apply their material to the roadway on two twenty. We were able to keep two twenty open during the, we were working with the state and parish vehicles salting twenty-four hours a day, salting, uh, two twenty to keep the bridges up.
Is this something that the city will be getting some kind of reimbursement back from, from the state?
This, this is no money exchange for this. This just is a formality that allows us to help D O T D. We're spreading their material when this operation is going on. We're, we're using our truck, no, it ain't only our truck at our time, to spread their material on the roadway.
So there won't be any, nothing for our employees or anything that we're paying to take care of a state highway?
Not from the state, not from.
All right.
Any additional questions? All right, please cast your vote.
Bloody water. That's how I think I'm more confused now than I was going into it.
Yeah, me too.
We'll explain it later.
Don't confuse us anymore now.
If, if we don't have an agreement with them and we have another winter event, we will not be able to assist them in keeping roads open. That's, would be the alternative to this.
Well, I mean, just my, my only concern with that is that we assist the state in other things that I think we're still waiting on money from years ago on reimbursement that we're, we're, you know, we, we have to use our money for other things here in the city, the city and not taking care of the state's problems. But, um, I understand that we have to keep those roads open while I twenty is under construction and everything like that. But, um, I think since we are helping the state out in their manpower, that there should be some compensation coming back from them for our manpower. I guess the fire department's coming up. They're gonna give us some money.
I want to just say, I, I, I get where you're coming from. I totally understand. Uh, just keep in mind this last time, especially with I twenty and the problems we had without them and what the parish did. We had the best, uh, outcome that we've had since all this came about. Uh, we weren't able, the time before, we weren't able to get out of airline drive on the Bean Boulevard into the hospitals. All that was taken care of. We were still able to use two twenty to get to hospitals. And so it, it, I know where you're coming from. Just remember it's very important, uh, especially during this I twenty. If I twenty wasn't a problem, I'd totally be right there with you. But right now, I would hate to see two twenty shut down for us and for the police right now to be able to respond and get where we need to go.
I don't, I don't look for us to have any winter weather this year, but it's, it's, uh, it's definitely, uh, an, an asset to us to have two twenty open all the time.
All right, thank you.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of information service system engineer due to vacancy of resignation.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of information services system specialists due to vacancy of resignation.
So moved.
Final reading.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for public works to field an animal control officer. I position in the Animal Control Division in Beckfield any vacant positions this creates. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, um, I, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but as y'all can see from the past two, eight and nine, that's two people in one division in our I T department, uh, people that have left for better paying jobs. And here we are at another department. I don't know the reason for them. That is just why I was stressing so strongly that it is so imperative for us to watch every dollar and figure out how we can pay our employees more money. So we're not here every two weeks okaying the hiring of more employees.
Additional questions or comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Parade permit fee waiver for a private, it's like a night five K parade.
So moved.
Second.
Who is my first?
Chris.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Reports, engineering.
Good afternoon, council. I'm gonna be a little more brief today. Um, this is our update for, uh, month end in February. Uh, not much has changed on our general overview. Uh, we did add a project in January and I'll get into that here in a little bit. Carriageways, a little ahead, gained another few days, uh, between last month and this month. Uh, percent completes around eighty-five percent, elapsed times around eighty-three percent. So they continue to stay on course there. Finsley Park improvements, um, that project is essentially complete. Uh, I'm, I'm working on Hammond's favorite word is a reconciliatory change order to get that closed out. There's a few little, uh, components that we'd like to address there. I'll bring those before the council for consideration. I hope to have those, uh, this week, but I didn't get it in time to make that happen. But, uh, for all intensive purposes, this project is done. Uh, another project's a complete. This is the, uh, Bel Air, uh, improvements there. Project's complete. They actually did that about five days ahead of schedule. Uh, we're working through some punch list items, but, uh, the project is substantially complete. Tinsley dugouts, we're a little behind, two days behind. That's based on the latest pay application that I had. So I'm showing that sixty-six percent complete with sixty-eight percent of the time elapsed there. And then Scott Street Drain is just will be the last day, uh, or last council meeting. You see that? We were able to finally finish up, uh, that project. They got the final payout in today and that project is complete. Municipal fire station and parking lot lighting, um, you kind of noticed the parking situation out front. It's a little weird. They've been putting the, uh, parking lot lighting in. Um, they're about eighty percent complete. Thirty-five percent of the time is elapsed, so they're very ahead of schedule there. Uh, municipal security complex, we're refining or really working to formalize the, uh, contracts for the contractor to get started on that. And, um, I expect to be close to done with that this week. Um, certainly by next month, I'll have a, an idea of when we, uh, plan to start tearing up the front here. Citywide street improvements, they are, uh, seventeen percent complete with eleven percent of the time elapsed there. They're ahead of schedule as well. You drive through, well, it's, that's the asphalt project, but on the concrete project, you kind of drive through, uh, green acres, uh, old green acres, I call it. And, um, you can see a lot of new work going on there. Airline Drive, uh, they are working this week to set up traffic control. That project will begin in earnest here very shortly. Uh, so that's gonna create a bit of a disruption to folks commuting south and north on airline, um, around Wimple Road, uh, but it's a much-needed project. Private development, not much has changed here. We still have Canout Place, uh, under construction, the Preserve, and then Rocket Fast. There's some minor things that roads in, but it still needs to be striped and signed. Um, so there's a little bit of work that needs to be done on that project. There's one project I didn't create a slide for, um, and y'all may have recalled the council appropriated about three hundred thousand dollars last year, um, to replace the generator at Brookshire Grocery Arena. We had some problems there. Public Utilities put one of our big generators out there. Uh, that generator arrived last week, was set up, uh, put on, uh, permanent use over there and came in, I think there was, it was budgeted at three hundred thousand. It came in quite a bit less than that, around a hundred and fifty thousand, um, per key. Uh, credit, with credits due, uh, that was the folks, uh, within building maintenance under Rodney and, and his crew that, that got most of that done, but I'm happy to see that complete. That was a bit of a headache. These are all our projects. Like I said, I added another one in here. Um, the mayor asked me to look at Viking Drive. We went out, um, I don't, if you drive Viking much, you notice that for, forever, there's been a lot of standing water in the ditches along Viking and that is a pretty pervasive thing. It's not just one spot. It's like the whole length. Um, I've got a proposal, um, to do a pretty detailed study of that area. Um, I worked with Wade and we went out there in engineering and kind of scratched our heads a little bit, but it, it's complicated. You got drainage that's coming off of I two twenty. Um, you got pretty big drainage, uh, facilities, um, in and around Plantation Drive and Viking and, um, it's all very, very flat. And so, um, I will be bringing a, uh, ordinance to y'all to study that in more detail, to come up with a better solution because I can't just throw dirt in the ditch and call it good. It's, it's, it's gonna be more involved. Um, the other thing I want to mention, I know, uh, Councilman Williams and I have had a number of meetings on council on aging. Um, we met with them today to start working through, um, the best scenario to utilize the money that the council's appropriated for them. Uh, so I'm trying to build some steam under that. Um, and I will continue to update the council on that particular project. And the others, I've got several proposals in hand and some other bits that I'll be bringing before the council in a couple of weeks. Um, just to keep pushing, uh, the number of these, keep pushing on these projects. Here's a pretty aggressive, uh, capital improvement plan. Any questions with this in particular? Any projects that y'all have specific questions on?
Being on that Brownlee Road.
Brownlee Road is one that we've got to get into design. Um, but it's, it's very close to the center of our radar. Um, I want to move that one as well as the two thousand and twenty-four, uh, citywide street improvement project that kind of similar. So.
Yeah, Ben, the, the Golden Meadows Turn Lane, I see that they have, um, they've surveyed that whole area and have it staked out. Is that y'all or is that the, is that D O T D that is coming there?
Oh, who's, uh, I know what you're probably seeing down there maybe would be the work for the water line. They're, they're putting the, the, uh, what we call the Barksdale South Water Line in.
Yeah, okay, so it's
Two different things, but I, I will become, I will, uh, I've got some information from Civil Design Group. We have money appropriated for that. As you can tell, based on our bid opening today, I don't believe it to be sufficient to do it.
Yeah.
Um, so I need a little bit of supplement for that. Um, I've got a freshened up cost estimate. I asked, uh, Civil Design Group to make sure that I encapsulated all the project costs. He was, uh, we've already submitted to get the permit from D O T D so that we can go to work. We'll have the permit in hand. I, I hope to have that before you, um, at next month. That, what that additional funding needs to be so that we can put that together. And we're looking at doing a similar one at, um, China Berry and Benton Road, a southbound turn lane there. So.
Well, if for some reason it doesn't come in cost effective, how long is that D O T D permit good for?
Two years.
Two years?
Yeah. I mean, and it, it's needed. It's an important project. The one that, all of these are important. It's just a matter
Yeah, it's a matter of money.
How important. But, you know, from the perspective of street work, um, on the two thousand and twenty-three street project, we've had Benton and Brown out there doing that work. I showed y'all a slide, but they're blowing and going. I haven't, that's like their old pay application. I haven't seen their latest one, uh, for February, but I will be coming to the council probably for about a hundred thousand dollars and things, kind of like for February, but I will be coming to the council probably for about a hundred thousand dollars and things, kind of like while you're there things. And hopefully y'all will agree with that, but I've, I've been pressing to get that, that done. Anything else?
Ben, a couple, one thing that's come up at a couple of these town hall events that I've been going to with the Charter Commission is on the, the striping project. Some people are saying in areas where maybe the street lights aren't as bright and the, the road striping is coming up. The reflectors are also missing or putting new reflectors is going to be part of the striping improvements we're going to do?
They should be. It should all be in accordance with that. I mean, there's a playbook for striping and reflect, reflectorized markings and things like that. So you, you see here, I've got it on the, on the books just because it's something that happens and I don't know that y'all are really ever, you know, you might see the bid opening come in, but traffic engineering does that. I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me. Let's see here. I can tell you on the spreadsheet, if you, if you're looking at it, it'll tell you how much money is on that line item.
I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand, twenty twenty-four citywide striping project.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty thousand. So, thank you, Richard. So we allocate that much and I've, I've, I've been working with finance. They've been going through last year's allocation and we have some funding in last year's that we're going to roll to this year. So if you have a specific area, let us know. That helps sort of guide where we go. We like to take pretty big swaths.
Yeah.
You know, so if there's a particular place.
There is, I've got it written down. It was more older Bossier, so.
It wouldn't surprise me.
Of us and a Barksdale Boulevard.
It's really hard, this is an excuse, but it, there's one company that does it and it's, it's hard to get on their radar. So what we try to do is do a global advertisement, so we'll just say we need X number linear feet of striping. We don't really strictly point to where that needs to be. Traffic engineering has a pretty good priority list of, of what has to be done, but we've done a lot, believe it or not. We put up, we've, we've done a fair amount of striping, so we do have more than a hundred and fifty thousand, probably close to twice that. So if you've got locations that need it, let us know. It's expensive, but it's, you know, it's important. It makes the city look good, so. Any of y'all, if there's a particular area, let, let us know and we'll make sure to map that.
And I got one follow-up question. On Air, Airline Drive, the south end of Airline Drive, that section of street that I think we've, I think we've repaired like five times is now.
Airline and Murphy.
Yeah, can you give us?
I can, so we have repaired it a bunch. We're repairing it again. The manhole at that intersection has a major hole in it. We actually did some ground penetrating radar because it made us concerned about the condition of, of all of that through there. We've had problems with it just at the manhole. Been working with Richard on this. We've done some police investigative work. We were of the opinion that it, it very likely could have been damaged from fiber activity. I'm not a hundred percent certain. I'm in that same camp at this point after looking at what we're dealing with. It's just strange. That manhole's been rehabbed. You know, so if you're looking down inside the manhole, which is all you can do, it looks pretty good from the inside. But where, and I can show you some pictures, think of like an hourglass. The sand in there just hourglass about twelve foot below the surface and all that sand, you know, went on down, went down to the airline pump station there that's across from Ranchland Acres and created quite a, quite a mess. So we're still working to put that together, but the culprit is a manhole that, that seems to have been damaged or is damaged and we're working to understand what, what caused that. We had pretty decent visibility on that when we were doing the rehab work there and it, it just didn't look like that. It's, it's hard to tell. I mean, it looks like three or four places on the side of that manhole. Somebody took a massive hammer, you know, and and it's, you know, there's just missing blocks of concrete on it, so.
Is, is that an area where the providers escaping my memory right now? What, what's the cable company that's?
There's a bunch. There's been a, they're, they're everywhere as y'all know.
What's the one that's giving us problems all over the city?
They all do. I, I mean, right now, we, we have a lot of Comcast going in right now. But there's active MCI cable in that area. I don't believe Comcast is there, but MCI and Bell South have been in that area. You know, so it, it's, it's tricky, but that one unfortunately, you know, I thought we had a smoking gun there. I just, it's, the, the smoke's kind of fizzling out on it, but we are working hard to get that back up and, and closed in. And yeah, my, that was not a fun call, but.
And if I may, the concern Councilman Smith was that it, it initially appeared that some person had come in there and punched a hole through the sewer manhole, which would have created the problem. And then there, it looked that there might be willful action to cover that up.
It did.
And so we took it on as if that happened and.
And it still may.
Yeah, we're still, it's still being investigated, but we ask for it to be investigated because if it is, then it, it needs to be investigated as such. If somebody got down there and created a problem and then tried to cover it up, it's a problem.
So.
It could be.
Yeah, and it still may be because it, it, you know, those drilling machines hit the concrete, you know, and it looks, you know, it's like somebody just plowed into it a couple of times. But when you look at where that cable is on, say, the east and west side of Airline and then it, you know, it, it kind of lays down into the, the sand, you know, as it's all sloughing off into the manhole and then that cable's kind of being sucked into the manhole too, so it, it's a mess.
And I remember, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm sorry if y'all are ready to get out of here. I'm just.
No.
The last time we worked on it, didn't you, didn't you tell us something about the water table was giving it issues? Did we resolve that issue?
So the, the, the gravity main that we put in, believe it or not, we extended that gravity main. So the gravity main, when we were original out there, I, you know, I'd have to go back and, and resurrect that. But we were focused on making a, a significant repair at the location of where we had that settlement. And we extended that all the way to the point of tying into the manhole. And that main is actually sitting on a structure. We actually think of a bridge. That main's literally sitting on a structure. The, the, the gravity main is sitting maybe centered in around fourteen foot bu- below grade and that strata of soil there was real like flowing material. So there was no structural bearing capacity of that material in that area. So we did a ton of work to make sure we wouldn't be back in that hole. But it, it, and it's not the line. The line's intact. It's connected to the manhole. All of that is in good shape. It's like, it's, it's, it, where it's failing is up above where the invert of that sewer is coming in. There's just a hole in the manhole there, so it, it does look to me like something hit it. But I, as you look at the evidence, my concern is it'll be challenging to prove that. But it, it's, it's hard to identify what would have caused that kind of damage on the, on the manhole. So we're working through that in, in addition to making sure we get it fixed, but it, very unfortunate.
Ben, real quick, have you talked to your good friends over at DOTD about all those lights on exit ramp line toward the end? There's some more.
There's more. I have not talked to my good friends at DOTD about it. John Kelly and I have been keeping up with some of that. I drove it last Thursday, well, maybe last Wednesday, I drove it while they were on and sort of, sort of took inventory of what was happening through there. We've had, and the mayor's been involved in that. We've had some interesting conversation with DOTD about the lighting on I twenty. And I, I, I think we need to meet about it. I don't know. Anything I say about it right now would purely be conjecture. The, the plans call for a lot of that to be replaced. But we're, we haven't been able to get clarity on is that going to happen or not, so. Anything else? Thank you all.
I got one thing for you.
Seriously? Okay, sorry.
Angela Williamson, Finance Director, monthly finance report.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for the month ended January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Page one is revenue by fund. The city is currently thirty-one percent over budget. The decrease in Fire Improvements and Operations Fund and Parkway Capital Fund revenue is due to a decrease in sales tax revenue compared to January twenty twenty-three. The majority of the decrease in Streets and Drainage Fund is due to a five hundred and forty-five thousand transfer from Riverboat Capital Fund for unplanned streets and drainage projects in January twenty twenty-three. The majority of the decrease in Riverboat Capital Fund revenue is due to an hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar transfer from sales tax capital to combined projects in January twenty twenty-three. The majority of the decrease in Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund is due to a four hundred thousand dollar transfer from Fund Eight Twenty Public Safety and Health Trust Fund in January twenty twenty-three. Page two is expenses by fund. The city's currently nine percent under budget. The majority of that decrease in EMS fund is due to the transfer of an ambulance alliance payment of three hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars to EMS Capital in January twenty twenty-three. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is down compared to January twenty twenty-three. Page four is the Manning Report. There are two less full-time employees than last month. Full-time employees are forty-five under budget. There's one less part-time employee than last month and part-time employees are seven under budget. Page five is the Water and Sewer Utility Report. Net operating income after debt service for January twenty twenty-four has decreased seventeen percent compared to prior year and is twenty percent over budget. On a rolling twelve-month basis, net operating income is up nine percent. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Update on litigation Weston, Weston Riley Marriott versus Thomas Chandler, Bojor Paris Dockett, number one seven two one oh five.
Counsel and mayor, I'll be, I'll be brief. I know that we're at the end of the meeting, but I did want to give you a brief update. As you may be aware, Mr. Marriott had filed suit on January twenty-fourth against the city seeking a court order to compel the city to respond to a public records request that he had made in mid-December. The, Mr. Marriott filed that suit on January the twenty-fourth. The city had actually answered that request a week prior on January the seventeenth. Because Mr. Marriott is engaged in litigation against the city, he is a represented party. Our protocol has been, since Mr. Jacobs and I got here, to send public records requests responses from the city attorney's office. Mr. Jacobs is also a named defendant in the suit involving Mr. Marriott. And so for all of those reasons, back in October, we began to have public records requests responses sent not from Mr. Jacobs, but from myself and not directly to Mr. Marriott, but to his retained counsel with the Tulane First Amendment Law Clinic. And we've sent every response to Mr. Marriott since October to his attorneys. We had sent the requested records to his attorneys on January the seventeenth. As would, we would learn in a trial a couple of weeks ago, the Tulane attorneys, and I, I take them at their word and I do think they were, I do think that they were telling the truth that the responses were apparently quarantined on their Tulane email server. So the attorneys, the city had sent the records and their server had received the records, but they were not personally aware of the receipt. But our position was that the city doesn't have to, I mean, I even looked for a fax number for these attorneys and I couldn't locate it. I mean, we'd sent everything by email to them previously and never had any problem. I actually, because it was litigation with these responses, I, I copied two different outside lawyers as well as myself and my staff and everyone else received the same email that Mr. Marriott's attorneys apparently received, but it was quarantined. But the city had responded on January the seventeenth. Mr. Marriott filed suit on January twenty-fourth. The issue became no later than January, I mean, I'm sorry, no later than February the first, Mr. Marriott had actual knowledge that the city had responded to the request. And despite our repeated request for him to dismiss his action, he refused to do so. And the city was sued. We were the defendant in a lawsuit. That type of suit cannot be dismissed by the city. And so we chose not to dismiss it. We asked him multiple times to dismiss his clearly meritless suit against the city, but he refused to do so. And so on February the sixteenth, we proceeded to trial. The judge dismissed his suit. And then we moved into a phase where we sought sanctions against Mr. Marriott for refusing for more than fifteen days to dismiss his action that he knew was meritless. And the judge did award a monetary sanction against Mr. Marriott in the amount of five hundred dollars. And it's unfortunate that we had to get to that point, but again, the city was a defendant in a lawsuit and it's in an action that is of a procedural nature. When you're trying to file what's called a mandamus against a government, it has to move very quickly. And it did move very quickly, but we had no choice but to defend it. And it was, it, it was established at the trial that not only had the city answered all of Mr. Marriott's requests, there had been sixty-one out of sixty-one requests had been responded to since August of, of last year, including the one on which he filed suit, so. That's the update on that litigation. Any questions?
Any announcements? Mayor.
Well, thanks to all the council and Alicia Johnson with the chambers. There's been a lot of groundbreaking and ribbon cuttings here lately for the past, this whole year and last year has been a lot. I want to appreciate y'all and thanking Ms. Johnson for all the hard work they got to get people coming to Bossier City. There's going to be Saturday, going to be a ribbon cutting for the Seventh Tap down in East Bank at ten o'clock. So that's another one I know and there's some other ones this week that I can't really.
Um, I think Friday, Kubota, Kubota dealership Friday morning in South Bossier.
Yes, I mean, we're, I mean, things moving on up, guys.
That concludes your report, Mayor.
At this time, yes, sir.
All right, meaning adjourned. You got all that?
Yeah, doing it Thursday.